Want to welcome everybody to the seat.
You're up, Angie.
You're ready for public comment period? Andrew Fortfeger.
Who?
That's a mouthful. That's a mouthful of...
He can hear him a girl. I'm here being a member of the council. I'm here on behalf of the council for Pride Group. We, as part of the Kansas Pride Program that's over at the Kansas State Extension Office, are needing to get a governing body resolution that will accept us as a official group. So you'll see in front of you possibly a resolution. It's very straightforward. If they have changed it, thank goodness. This will be good for three years. You're going to have to see my good face. God help us that we're on the phone still here. Anyhow, that's all I'm asking for. This is so that we can be recognized by that state program as an official group. Okay, that's it. Unless you have questions.
Hoping to be a little more active in the upcoming year. Okay, do I have any questions, comments, concerns, emotions? Okay. Okay. Resolution of Pride Program. Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve the Kansas Pride Program Resolution for period, Council Grove. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, six zero.
Thank you.
Resolution zero one zero three. Two, three dash zero one.
No, just one.
Oh.
I think, don't we just need one?
Yeah, I have, I have the original. That was just copied so everybody could see what it is.
Not all of us can see this. She has one representative.
I have the color copy one here.
Seem like a lot of signatures.
Zero one zero three.
Zero one zero three. Twenty-three.
That's right. Don't you announce?
Yeah. Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which supposes amends from the previous meeting, the appropriations, and we do not have any lap, like cabin transfers this time. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, Jason.
Second.
Okay, Jason, Sean. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries, six zero. Thank you. Old business, Highway 56 resurfacing update.
So Brady and I worked on the advertisement. It was put in the paper on December 27th. All bids will be due back to the city on January 20th by noon. At that time, KDOT, Brady and I and the people who bid on it will be on a conference call to lock open all those, and the lowest bid wins. So, and that is doing resurfacing curb to curb from Belfry Hill, bottom of Belfry, to Third Street this year. And then in '24, we'll do from Third Street to the east city limits, same thing, curb to curb. So.
When we say lowest bid wins, the RFP state, like we have a pretty strict...
Yeah, so yeah. So there's... Yeah, so what was in the paper, it called out all the quantity and requirements and all that stuff. And then whoever wins the contract will get a binder that's about that thick of all the state requirements and engineering plans and all that stuff for the project.
I only ask that because I wanted everybody to hear that on camera. We've had some issues in the past of making sure we were taking care of our, our end of the bargain on these projects. I just wanted to hear that.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree that Chip and Seal didn't perform very well.
Yeah.
Which is why we're not doing it anymore.
There you go.
So.
Okay, you don't really need an action on that then?
No, just the next council meeting, I'll update you guys on who wasn't winning there and what the bid was. Make sure you guys are good moving forward with that, with that, that bid.
Okay.
So, the plan is to obviously weather permitting, start between April and May, be done before motion today.
Okay, that'll be good. Okay. Moving ahead, new business, Drew Ricketts, Kansas State Assistant Professor.
And this was an ad, I added this today. Sean called me over the weekend about this, and then Sean can explain it a little bit more in detail.
So, yeah, you guys know we have the range out there. You guys approved it several years ago that we could use the city property, lease it for three years. Drew's here to talk about the Kansas State Shooting Sports Team possibly using it in the future of an adding onto with the grant that he's got available to him. It would be, in my mind, a really good deal for our community as a whole. Drew, I will say, helped out in the past with passing events. We had ladies' day event, QWF, wanderone outdoors, and Kansas State Shooting Sports Ladies came down and helped out. So, I mean, it's obvious they're willing to, you know, take their time to help us out. So I hope that we can, at least here in Austin, see where we can go from here.
Sorry. So, first off, I'm Drew Ricketts. I'm the coach of the K-State Shopping Team, the Extension Wildlife Specialist, and I live here in Council Grove. So, I have some, I guess, big reasons that I think it would be good if we could practice down here alone and salvage. I wouldn't have to travel. Right now, we're practicing three different disciplines at three different facilities, from Cape Cod all the way back to Junction City. And so, it's difficult for us to get our practices in, and that means I don't get to help the team a lot. One of the things that I noticed when I was out with Sean for the ladies' shooting event was there was some room at the trap park here, some space, meaning that some things could be added if y'all were interested in that. And that would make this facility potentially a place where our team could practice all three disciplines that we need to be able to shoot. It would also allow the local youngsters to get the opportunity to shoot more disciplines and those sorts of things if they wanted to. And we could sort of combine resources to try and make things better. If I'd known there was going to be a PowerPoint, I would have put something together, and it would be a little bit easier to follow. But I thought I'd throw this together. So basically, what's existing out there is the little black square over where it says skeet overlay, and then the gravel pad, and then the inner sort of half moon that's white is the concrete pad, that's the shooting positions for the trap range. To be able to shoot skeet on that same space, we would add what's called a skeet overlay. And I've included a diagram of how that would look. But basically, you know, trap, you've got one machine that's throwing targets away from you at angles. Skeet, you're shooting crossing targets. On the left-hand side, you've got the high house that's throwing the higher target. On the right-hand side, you've got the low house that's throwing the lower target. So, we're not just shooting step away, now we're shooting crossing step. And this white sort of semicircle that goes far to the back would be where the shooting positions would be added for skeet. And then, over to the left or the west, we've got an area that could be used for a five stand. And a five stand is more shooting sporting place type target. So there's five shooting positions, there's space five meters apart on center. If you look at the very back picture, that's just an example of what the shooting cages might look like that we would use. You can see that they've got uprights on the side for length and gun movement, so we're not going to be swinging guns all over the place and that sort of thing. We're keeping them pointed downrange. This would be separated from the skeet and trap area by 175 yards. If it was laid out how I have it on here, it wouldn't have to be laid out that way, but that would give us some space. And so, five stand, basically, we would have five to eight machines throwing targets, doing all different kinds of stuff that we can change every week if we want to, that might be throwing crossing targets, incoming targets, going away targets, rabbits on the ground, smaller targets, and all those sorts of things. And those machines would be staged out to the north of where I have what says shooting positions, and then throwing those angles. There's the yellow, or excuse me, the orange lines that are going to the northeast and the southwest on the skeet overlay show the target travel for the skeet targets. So there's lots of space between the trap and skeet area and the five stand area that we wouldn't be shooting at each other if this all went down. So I guess the reason I'm here is to ask the city permission to apply for a grant that would fund a lot of this stuff. And in order to do that, K-State would require that there would be some sort of agreement in terms of we can, we can use this space for a certain number of years. It will be arranged for this many years that we can use. Along with that agreement, just language could be put in about local folks using it as well, and that sort of thing. So, I don't want to go to all the work yet and get the grant and then be shut down.
Do you have a law that you've done this before, or do you have like the agreement that we'd use with other communities and things like that?
I don't, no. And this wouldn't just be a K-State agreement, there would probably be some language from the granting agency too, which is the Midway USA Foundation.
Okay.
We have a team endowment there. But it would, it would be something that K-State attorneys would approve and City Council Grove attorneys would approve too. So it wouldn't be something where, you know, K-State's raising the white line in the air and saying, this is what you're going to do. It would, y'all would have input, for sure.
So all, so like, as of now, what he has laid out here falls within, or at least that we, that the council agreed to before I was on council. So that's all, that all falls within that. Drew and I talked about it, I talked to Nick a little bit about it. The biggest issue that we would run into is Drew's thinking about 10 years is what they would like to see for a lifespan of this place, and obviously, we would try to extend that long, further than that. Where we needed to talk to Brian about was binding future councils and how that would affect us down the road. So, we have city lake leases and other things in that effect that have carried through up to this point. We haven't had any complaints that I haven't. I've gone out there, we had, you know, some, some plants of lead in the ground. I went out with the KDWP folks and health court folks. They decided that was not an issue. So, nothing's ever came to it, we've never had any major issues, and I can't say that we've ever had a single noise complaint on the range. We support not only Council Grove, but the National High School Rodeo Association shot out there, and Northern Heights shot out there. So, we also allow kids that don't have trap teams to come shoot on our trap team because it is a club. So, that's as far as I can go with that, and then Brian will have to help us out.
Yeah, and I would caution using the lake leases as the guide for binding our future councils. I don't know necessarily if there's a problem with the tenure issue. Once we decide what that means over 10 years, what does this infrastructure cost, the grants that we're looking at, how much is it going to cost us to maintain that every year for 10 years? What do they expect from us? What would we may expect from them? Those are things, but those are things that we can flesh out. This isn't a wheel that has not previously been invented. It's a great opportunity for a community, so I'm sure we can work something out if you, if the council were to choose to do it. But those are just questions that we need to decide what the questions are and then what the answers might be.
So, as of this point, the QWF committee and the volunteers have maintained everything out there. We take care of everything. The agreement was no cost to the city. So, the only thing that we've asked of the city up to this point is some benches for the kids to sit on and folks to watch. So, so far, there's been zero cost acquired, incurred by the city.
So what's K-State going to give us for 10 years?
Well, right, right now, I've got $15,000 worth of machines.
And I don't even mean that just...
No, no, yeah, yeah. So I currently have $15,000 worth of machines and another $3,000 worth of wireless equipment for the five stand. The grant that I would be applying for is about a $70,000 grant, and that would buy another probably 45, no, be $5,500 worth of machines. We can buy temporary high houses and low houses that could be moved, and that's $7,500 for the pair skeet set, $6,500.
So, and that's enough for me? I just, I, those are the things that we just need to keep in that line. I think that Sean, you guys can get together and kind of work through the point.
And this is something as well, that all of our high school kids have, per their agreement with K-State, can use this. We don't have the opportunity to shoot from these positions right now, we just have a trap because of our budget.
Sure.
And everything we've been, we've had up so far has been to the generosity of our QWF members in the community. So, it's all been taken care of with outside of the city responsibility, period.
Right.
So that's, you know, Drew talked to me and asked me how I thought it would go. I said, man, I can't see a real negative side to this.
Now, there's not much of a downside, and I think what we would need today then is, is really just the, the council basically giving us the go-ahead to, to look into it, flesh out what exactly the agreement would be, and then we could sit down with Nick and put together a plan to actually put it forth towards the council once we talk to...
I think the thing, one question I have, insurance. I feel you guys have insurance, but obviously, you're probably not going to cover K-State.
K-State team, because we are part of the university, is covered by K-State's insurance.
You definitely have all the equipment as well, that you would be purchasing with your grant money? That's good. I just worry, because there's people that do need to buy stuff, and I worry that's a lot of expensive equipment.
Yeah. That, I mean, we, we have a umbrella policy that covers all equipment owned by K-State, but there's $500,000 of that.
Two cents on that.
There has to be a, basically, a declared state of emergency before you can even collect on a vehicle collision.
So we've been out there for three years so far, and we haven't had an issue other than vehicles driving more than shouldn't. I'll tell you that.
And if, if the city was open to it, we could also potentially talk about working together to add the fencing gates and stuff like that if needed.
Drew, that'd be my question, is what kind of security do we have out there once we do have some infrastructure that's worth...
Most of, like, ours is bolted down, locked up.
Right.
So, and I would assume that there's, a lot of that will be bolted down. And how, how often do you guys shoot, Drew? What's your season?
Once a week during the school year, so basically, August to May, roughly once a week, if we could practice everything on spot, you know, four to eight hours, something like that, once a week.
And like I said, this, none of this is, is new. Somebody's already figured all this out somewhere before, it's just a matter of us not knowing the questions to ask just yet.
I always worry about insurance, because it's, I mean, that's, you're talking $70,000 plus another 15, I think you said, $1,000 worth of equipment? That's a lot, that's a lot of money just to sit out there and not have to be covered.
It is, for sure.
So, let's say we move and do this. What would it take to go to the next step? So it's actually a competitive range for collegiate meets, high school meets?
Host.
Even beyond that?
Sure. That, that's a challenge with the amount of space that you have.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, for, for trap and skeet, you need most of less space, but, you know, if you've got a trap and skeet overlay, let's say you got, you can get four teams through, you probably get, you could probably get six squads through in the morning on trap, and then you could get four squads through in the afternoon on skeet, or something like that. You know, I mean, it's not, you're not going to be able to get enough volume of people through to have it probably be a competitive range with the amount of space that you have.
So where the, where the high school competes down there, Wichita, you have a mile of ranges. So you're stacked all the way through.
We're in here.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you...
If you've got a mile to put machines on, I'll find the money to put machines on, because I love to have a big sporting player around.
So, yeah, that's, it's a, it's a big space, but they also, like, our kids only compete at the trap level, they don't have the opportunity to shoot at those other levels, but you go like a quarter mile plus of just trap ranges, then you go to skeet and everything else.
I just, I'm, I'm out there asking, yeah.
No, it's a good question, for sure.
And I will say, and I've mentioned this before, like, high school shooting sports is the fastest growing and safest sport that's out there, so...
Even more safe than esports?
Probably that.
Then? How about, and finally, how much do we have about? Right now, he said it would take about a mile. How much do we have right now?
Oh, we only have three acres right there. So basically, yeah, if you look at this picture, you're double that.
It's hard to tell from the ground.
Yeah, just from the front of the trap house, so the lease doesn't, only covers like 50 feet in front of the trap house, but we were able to make that agreement, you know, that our targets landed out there, they're biodegradable, they don't hurt anything, so they can hang over that with no issues. But it's from about 50 feet in front of the trap house back to the lake road, is what it covers.
I just wondered, I didn't know.
No, if we wanted to...
From here, it looks like a big area. And then you mentioned something about local people could use this, or it was a possibility?
I was thinking more about the local, the local shooting teams and that sort of thing, but, I mean, there's, there's nothing, there would be nothing at K-State that would say that it couldn't be opened and ran as a private club or something like that one day a week or some, you know? That, if that happened though, then we would need some money back to pay for wearing terror machines, because, you know, once you start getting that volume of people out there, then...
It's a different level of liability.
Yeah, a whole different thing. But, but since we said local, I thought we better clarify that.
Sure.
So basically, with the QWF to run that, our insurance covers that if we have a QWF member onsite running that. So, I'm sure, you know, typically, we could maybe even double cover, like Drew could become a QWF member, and we can look forward that way too. So that's something we could explore. Now, the biggest issue that I can see is you have a pretty tight deadline on, like most grants, they throw them out there and you've got to get on them pretty quick, so what's your deadline on your grant?
Yeah, so if we're pursuing this this year, the grants do begin February, I don't remember exactly what day, but, so the, the actual putting the proposal together wouldn't take a lot of time. It's, it's not, we can be an elaborate grant. They're designed for, you know, four age all the way up to college folks to be able to apply for these, so it's not, it's not like applying for a National Science Foundation grant.
I just feel like it's a win-win.
I think so, he needs...
Just bragging rights, that we have a K-State shooting team here, I mean, I think that's a...
He just needs a vote from you guys if he can move forward with, to apply for the grants.
Okay, so I need a motion to, if somebody so desires to allow or tell Drew that he can go, move forward trying to find a grant, that we would be willing to work with them.
And then also, we're on a contract.
And we're good contracts, too.
I'll make that one.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, was that a mark? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, six zero.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for reaching out, that's interesting to your glasses. Okay, Nick, please, Department of Forest card discussion.
So, we budgeted for a police car this year. We have one that we're not currently using because it needs several thousand dollars worth of work, and we've already worked on it once and spent several thousand dollars on it. So I, the guy that we have worked with in the past is Andy Surville out of Andover. That's where we got the two Fords we have, and then the Ford Explorer that Sean currently drives. They have a 2020 Chevy Tahoe with 45,000 miles on it. Fully radio patrol and do whatever we need to do for $36,000. Now, if you're buying a new Tahoe and then outfit it, you're talking...
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I'm saying, I might be talking to a school right now, trying to find one.
That's the thing. I, you should have had something in the beginning here.
Possible to find right now.
Yeah, but he's, he, he wanted more than 30, 30, he wanted more than 36, I just wanted 36, where...
You'd monkey.
What was the mileage again?
45,000.
It's available now?
It will be available in 45 days.
Okay.
So he's taking it in and outfitting a brand new vehicle for, I don't remember which city he said, but he takes those in on trade and then he resells them.
Where's it coming from again?
Andover. Andover. Andover, yeah.
What's the plan for the car that we're not going to do anything with?
We're going to get rid of it.
Sell it?
I don't know, I haven't decided that yet. I, well, it'd be, so, that's how I would like to do it, find somebody that can sell it at an auction for the city, because that gray one that we sold for 1,500 bucks went to auction and sold for 8,000. So, if we could pay someone a consignment to take it to auction, sell it for us, and stuff like that, I think we'll be better money ahead than sitting against this 1,500 for one of them, so. And realistically, being a second-class city, we don't have to put things up for bid and sell it that way. We can do that, we can take something to auction or have somebody do it for us.
Is purple wave an option for us? I mean, can we...
Purple wave.
Doesn't work out good?
I wouldn't take it as purple wave. Things don't sell well on there.
Okay.
But there's several people in town that have dealer licenses and go to auction and can take it and get rid of it for us, and we just pay them a commission for doing it for us.
I think the upside of the auction is better than trying to, you know, pick less and sell it around.
If you had told me that very part, I would have went for eight grand, I wouldn't have sold it for, we wouldn't have done a bid for 1,500 on it, so. But, so that's kind of my plan with it, once we get this other one bought and get it all stripped down and stuff like that, so.
How's the budget look? Does it look okay for that?
It's a new year, so we have, we're starting over, so the budget's fine. The way I would do it is take half of 36 out of the police budget and half out of the equipment reserve.
Do you have any pictures of the car yet?
I don't, I don't. He's supposed to, I, he just emailed me what he, I was asking for it and what was included with it today. He actually emailed me that at four, I talked to him this morning, so.
Does it match our others? I'm teasing.
Well, the stickers will, once we get it.
Once we get it.
Yes, what I'm asking for is, we need to go look at it, we're not going to buy without looking at it, obviously, but permission for me to move forward with Sean, and obviously, I'll take Alan with me when we go look at it. Mechanically, like, a Tahoe with 45,000 miles on it, there's not going to be much wrong with it.
Should be okay.
Yeah, so.
It has all the requirements, it sounds like, if it's already out.
It has the radar, it has everything, so everything's on it already, so.
Okay. What are your thoughts?
I've had several officers ask me when we're going to get them a car, so, or, you know, some type of vehicle, so I know they need it.
And we had, that one, other one's now on commission for five, six months, but we haven't had the money in the budget to do anything.
We talked about it a little bit, after we, I mentioned something about the Tahoe that a couple officers are driving around.
Getting it running.
Somebody, what's our timeline on getting that?
We're going to have to take it and get an estimate to get it done.
And so, once we get this, will it allow us to rotate that out for a period of time to get it fixed?
Yep. That's actually the plan, Sean, so.
Perfect.
Okay, do I hear any motions? Any more discussion or commotion?
I make a motion to give Nick permission to go look at this police cruiser, the Tahoe, and if they like it, to go ahead and take a commitment to purchase it for 6, 36,000?
That's what, yeah, so.
Half from, half from the equipment reserved, half from the police department.
Yes, I got that.
Who's got it? Sharon, Sean.
Sharon's got that.
I think it was equal, but that's... Okay. All of us in favor? That's true. Opposed? Our first big spend of the year. Motion carries. Okay. Next, an executive session, Larry?
I would like to make a motion that the council go into an executive session concerning a non-elected official matter. The entire council, the city administrator, and the city attorney for 30 minutes.
Did you include the mayor?
Yep.
Did you?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Motion carries. We'll be back in 30 minutes or less. Okay, we're going to re-adjourn, I mean, is that it?
Re-adjourn.
Re-adjourn. That didn't sound right.
Oh, re-adjourn.
We can re-adjourn, yes, okay. So now we're going to start with Governor Vodick comments, and Nick, I'm going to start with you.
I hope everybody had a good Christmas, a new year, and look forward to two thousand twenty-three and what that brings.
Right.
I don't have anything there.
Okay. Sean?
Um, just, yeah, Happy New Year and that little bit of ice we had over the holidays. I appreciate the city crews getting out there and taking care of that as soon as they could. I saw one truck start to come up our hill and turn around, they didn't want to come up that way.
Well, I called, it was, I think it was nine-thirty, it was still raining, or sleeping out or whatever. And I called Jeff, I said, I'm sure you're aware, but it's on Facebook, and I've gotten some text message. He goes, I know, we're on it, he goes, you don't need to understand, you can't just go out and throw down salt.
No.
Well, they should have been staying in anyway, it was cold.
Well, that was pretty unexpected, I didn't, I did not expect that. And, yeah, I had my truck parked down the hill, and even the short amount that I went down, I spun around backwards and ended up backing the rest of the way down to get turned around. So I appreciate those guys because that, that's a lot of, that's a lot of skill that they use to get out there and get that, that salt out without having any incidents or accidents because that's huge for us as a city to be a professional enough to not go out there and make a mistake, so, good on them.
Well, it wasn't just us because the highways were having, people were all off and everything. I called Nick, I went down to Brick Street on Hockaday and I was, I couldn't stop. And so I called, I said, have they already done, Denise said, yeah, there's nothing else we can do, so. We did the best we could, and I think that was great what they did.
Well, it's no different, Highway fifty-six, the Turnpike, we went to Kansas City Sunday after Christmas, and it was a sheet of ice, it was dangerous, dangerous. And then you get to Turnpike, and Turnpike's clear. But it was, fifty-six was really dangerous.
Depending on the way the wind blew and everything, I think, I don't know. Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Denise?
Uh, I'm encouraged, I like the idea of the, what was his name, the?
Drew Ricketts.
K-State, yeah, Drew, coming to, bringing that to our town. I think that would be a positive thing.
Don't mean give me a lesson.
Yeah.
When I was walking out. He told me to give you a lesson. And I said, I, I would.
We're going to have to vote on that.
Yeah. I would say I needed it. And he said, that's good, you don't have any bad habits.
There you go, that's right.
Larry?
I have nothing missing in there.
Okay. Mark?
Nothing for me, Mayor.
Okay, Sharon?
Looking forward to a great year, just lots of exciting things going to happen, I hope.
We do, too.
We're going to make it happen, right?
That's right. Jason?
Happy New Year. And other than that, nothing.
Happy New Year. And I don't really have anything either, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So. Josh, hang it, Sharon.